The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting. Town of Berlin, July 26th, 2016. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilor Duncan Allen.
Here.
Councilor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Przydinkin.
Here.
Councilor Ludding.
Here.
Councilor Kynessa.
Here.
Councilor Shaq and Councilor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, great, thanks. Well, we'll start out tonight with, we have an audience of citizens, so whoever wants to come forward, I do have one.
There's a name on the list.
Yeah, one name, I have one name on the list that's signed up, so Imelda Magillo, Magello, I'm sorry, 86 Devonshire Way. And anyone else after, we know we have no other signups, so whatever you'd like to do.
Hello.
Hi.
I am Imelda Magello of 86 Devonshire Way, and I'm here representing the Griswold School Parents Club. We have been hoping to replace our playscape at Griswold School for engagement, safety, and compliance issues for several years. We are thankful that the Town Council kept this funding in the town budget. Since November, a committee at the school comprised of parents and teachers have met to discuss our needs and desires. These included additional swings, more opportunities for climbing and balance, differentiation for older and younger students, and more engaging options. We have shared designs with students and asked for their opinions. We have consulted with the board, with the board's physical therapist, and she mentioned the way the playscape was spread out was optimal for kids. The smaller playscape has many lower-level elements that will be accessible to all students. The physical education teachers commented that the elements that addressed upper body strength and balance were age-appropriate. As you know, the parents are behind this project 100 percent. The Parents Club donated $26,000, raised over $1,200 from a walkathon, and received a $500 grant. And most importantly, our children are super excited to have a brand-new playground, my seven-year-old son included, who is soon to be a second grader. His eyes light up, and I'm bombarded with a slew of questions. Will it have a slide? How about more swings? What color will it be? Oh, and the most important question, does it have two floors? Thank you for your dedication to the students and the community of Berlin.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. George.
George Miller, 1231 Orchard Road. I just wanted to make a couple of comments relative to last town meeting on charter revision and a couple of comments that were made at the public meetings. The first one revolves around kind of the impression being given by several prominent members of the Democratic Town Committee that the charter as written will basically restrict choice, significantly restrict choice, for the people that are voting on candidates. And in that, they basically made comments about that the way it's structured, the majority of the appointments will be made by Fred Jortner, who was the chairman of the Democratic Town Committee, and Ann Riley, who was the chairman of the Republican Town Committee. And I just wanted to clarify from the Republican perspective, and I won't speak for the Democratic side because I'm not all that much up to speed on that. And Kate, I'd like, if you could, if I say anything that's wrong, to kind of correct me, because I really want to get this right.
Okay.
First of all, Ann Riley has absolutely no say whatsoever in terms of the candidates who are ultimately chosen to be up for election. I mean, she does vet people, she makes recommendations and so forth, but the Republicans basically choose their candidates at a caucus. Okay, it's a caucus of all Republicans that are in the town of Berlin. Any registered Republican can come to that caucus and have a say on who those elected, who those delegated candidates will be, okay? Now, I'll use as the example, the Town Council. If there are seven members of the Town Council, if Republicans wanted to come to that caucus, they have the right to nominate seven people, even though only five can be elected, okay? And it's a done deal. If they come up there and they nominate somebody and they get a second, irrespective of what the Republican Town Committee wants or what Ann Riley wants, that person is on the ballot, okay? And that's going to hold true for every other, every other office, too. So we'll take, for example, the Board of Finance. We're talking about six members on the Board of Finance. The end result will be three Republicans, three Democrats. However, the Republicans at that Town Caucus can nominate six candidates, up to six candidates, and we have to run those six candidates. There may be seven or eight candidates on any of these offices that get nominated, in excess of the number, you know, whether it's seven for Town Council, or six for Board of Finance, or nine for Board of Education, or whatever we end up with. And if those people don't get nominated, say we pick seven and two of them don't get nominated, they have the right to force a primary, okay? So this is not a closed system, at least on the Republican side. I don't know whether Fred Jortner can, by decree, nominate all the people on the Democratic side, but I'm telling you, from our perspective of the Republican side, they cannot do that. So there can be infinite choice, or a lot of choice, depending upon the Republicans that want to attend those caucuses. They are not closed, okay? And we also similarly have tried to make it extremely easy for unaffiliated people to get on the ballot. Now, it is unfortunate that there's rules upon where the names get placed on the ballots, but we don't control any of that thing. We can't write into the charter that they're going to be up on the same line and things like that. But as Kate mentioned the other day, if we go the way we're going, there will be a different situation. They still will be grouped like with, you know, the Town Councils, except they'll be on the, not the Republican line, the Democratic line, they'll be on the, I don't know what the terminology.
It's a petitioning.
Petitioning candidates. They won't be all the way at the bottom. So we think we've given a lot of flexibility, and hopefully you'll listen later on, or whenever we want to have this dialogue, as to some of the logic why some of these numbers were chosen and why we think it will lead to a more effective form of government, okay? So that's what I kind of wanted to say on that. The next comment I want to make is sort of a ridiculous logic comment, okay? But when we had the public meeting, Fred Jortner was commenting on the referendum with regard to the budget. And his basic comment was along the lines with, well, if only 10 percent of the people vote irrespective of the budget, those 90 percent of the people that weren't there, well, obviously, they were in favor of the budget, because they didn't bother to come and vote. So there was comments here, both in the, I think there was some, a little bit of discussion, I'm not 100 percent sure, at the last town meeting, and I know there was discussion, I believe the Board of Education Chairman made this comment that says, well, there were 30 people here that were seriously not in favor of the Board of Education changes that we were making to the charter. Okay, well, I'm going to use Fred Jortner's logic. Well, 98 percent of the people that are registered voters weren't here either, so I'm going to take it that 98 percent of the voters are in favor. My point being is like, it's nice to have these meetings, but a lot of these, a lot of people can't come to these meetings. It's witnessed by these meetings here, you got a pretty good crowd here tonight relative to other times, and you got two important votes you potentially might be making. That's why all these people are here. Board of Education doesn't get a lot of people at their meetings very often. It's not that people aren't disinterested, but it's hard to dedicate three to four hours to come if you got one little topic that you might have some interest. Doesn't mean that you're disinterested. I think it's the primary reason why we moved away from the town meeting form of government, where a select few people who showed up to these meetings could seriously influence the direction of the town. It wasn't effective. We went to a referendum process. So I'm just asking, as we go forward on this charter revision, you remember there's another 99 percent or 98 percent of the people who should have a right to also make a decision on some of these things. That's all we're asking from that regard, okay? I want to make one last point. Two last points, real quick, ah, just one. You know, when we, when, at the public meetings, there was a lot of comments from, again, Board of Education proponents, which, you know, they have every right to say what they feel and what they think. But there was a lot of comments about that, you know, well, if you want transparency and you want to know, come to the Board of Education meeting, type of deal. You want to be influential, come to the Board of Education meeting. Come to the Town Council meeting. Well, I'd just like to point out, again, this is kind of for the record, out of all the Board of Education meetings, out of all the proponents of the Board of Education staying as a nonpartisan, out of all the Town Councilers, Mark, you were invited to come and talk at one of our meetings. The chairman of the Board of Education was invited and came. Dave Evans showed up one time. Nobody else showed up. These were public meetings, agendas were published, audiences, citizens were there, but not one single person came to voice their opinion then, or give us insight, or give us information, you know? So it works both ways here, type of deal. And we took some very hard criticism from some members, Gary Broschew in particular, slamming us basically for being closed, whatever. Gary never came to a single one of our meetings either. So I think that was a little bit of unfairness on some people's part to criticize the process that we went through, when it's a totally open process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, one thing. I think it's pretty evident that our party doesn't, Fred Jortner doesn't choose either, since we have a primary on August 9th, so just wanted to point that out and, you know, remind everybody out there that we should vote August 9th if you're registered as a Democrat.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're still in the audience of citizens. We have other speakers that would like to come up. This is your, yes, Brad.
Fred Jortner, 76 Shields Road. I didn't realize I was going to be a headliner tonight, so I wasn't prepared to speak on this topic, but a couple of points that I think we're overlooking here. Yes, the chairman has enormous power. Chairman of a Town Committee has great power. Yes, the members of the organization are the ones that vote, vote them in, that's correct. But I think the main point we were trying to make next week is that the three minority members of the Board of Finance, as it's proposed, have the ability to hold up any bonding, any financial issue going forward. It'll never even get to the council. That was the main point we were trying to make. And as far as the comment I made about 90 percent of the people not showing up to vote, it wasn't that they approved necessarily of the budget. It's, what I said was that they are satisfied with you folks representing them and you making those decisions. They're satisfied with that system, not that they're in favor of the budget, so I just wanted to clear that up for the record. And what I was, what I was mainly going to speak about tonight was, as the registrar of voters, I'm just giving you a heads up here that on November 8th, the ballot will look like President, Vice President, U.S. Senator, Congressman, State Representative, State Senator, registrar of voters, Board of Education. Then we'll have to go to a flip side and possibly have Police Station. And if you throw in a laundry list of charter questions, the possibility exists that you're going to have chaos on Election Day. You're going to have these folks in the polling places, in the privacy booths, fumbling through this, and it's going to take forever, and you're going to have lines out the door. We will manage that as best we can, if you choose to do that. But I just want you to be aware that that's a real possibility, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? Once, twice? All right, all right, so that will conclude our audience of citizens. Thank you, everyone. So let's go to new business.
Before you get started here. Can I make a motion to add this agenda item, number eight, for the Brownfields grant assessment? And that'll squeeze in after number seven and push number eight to number nine, right?
Okay, so we're doing, okay, we're making that eight. Okay, so we have to go ahead. Make a motion.
I just did.
Second, so second. All of us in favor? Aye.
I'd like to make another motion, so maybe some people don't have to hang around here, and take topic number five, the Griswold School playgrounds subject, and move that to number one.
Second. Okay, all of us in favor? Aye. opposed? Okay, so moved. All right, so five will become one. One will become two. I want to change all those numbers as we go, sorry. Okay, so we'll go to, actually, this was supposed to be a quick meeting tonight, but apparently that won't be the case. A lot of things got added to our agenda, that's okay. So let's take number one, which is now the topic, Griswold School playscape. Denise, if you want.
As council is aware from our budget meetings during the budget season, the Griswold's playscape is probably 25 years old, or 25 at least years old, they're all nodding. It was done originally with a lot of donations, a lot of parents' time. It's passed its useful life, basically. There are some concerns with the condition of the existing playscape. In addition, the trend these days is to do a playscape for younger children, as well as handicapped and ADA accessible playscapes, as well as a playscape for older children. And so it was felt that Griswold being the last elementary school that didn't have a new playscape, since Hubbard was replaced last year, and there's Friendship Place, and then the smaller one behind Willard, that it was time to replace the Griswold School playscape. The parents recognized the need, and as you heard earlier, they did a terrific job in helping to raise funds for the whole project. And it was felt that with the $110,000 that the town had placed in the budget, that if they were able to raise additional funds, and then the grounds crew felt that some of the monies that they had been given in the budget for the playground equipment could also be put towards the cost, went out to bid. There was a committee formed of individuals, including the parents, as well as the principal at Griswold, and the grounds crew, Jim Capades was also instrumental, and Jack Healy, and they interviewed three different firms that had responded to the RFP and came up with who they feel is the best playscape design and equipment that they can have for the funds that are available. So this needs to, there needs to be an acceptance of the donation from the Griswold School Parents Club, et cetera, in the amount of $27,751, added to the $110,000 in the budget, and also the $15,000 in the public grounds playground equipment budget, for an amount not to exceed $152,000, and they'll be able to do both playscapes. And I'm not sure if it'll be ready for school. The hope is that it'll be darn close, if not ready in September.
Okay. Great. Could we have a motion on this?
Sure. Move to accept the amount of $27,751 from the Griswold School, added to the $110,000 in fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget, and accept $15,000 from public grounds budget, and award the purchase and installation of a new play structure at Griswold School to M.E. O'Brien and Sons, in the amount not to exceed $152,000.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, yeah, try.
I would just like to thank the parents for their hard work and their contribution. I think it's wonderful that they got involved.
Yeah, I agree, that's great to, you know, gave you a lot of money, but not quite enough, and you obviously took the initiative to go out there and get the rest of it, which is great, so, nice job on that. Any other discussion? Hear me none, all of us in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with the playscapes. So, topic number two now will be our discussion concerning town priorities and debt structure and projections. What we're going to do, folks, is, we've got a couple other votes to take here, we'll take that right after this, we're going to just do a short discussion on some of these priorities we've been looking at. This was actually supposed to be a special meeting, just all about our priorities, and it was just more of a discussion meeting. But because we had some other business to take care of before August, we added all these other items on the agenda, and so we'll make this first part relatively brief, and at the end of our meeting, you know, topic now number nine, I guess we can have some more discussion about our planning, strategic planning going forward, that was to be the sole topic of this particular meeting. So, we will open the discussion. I know Dave, you passed out.
Yes.
A bunch of charts, if you want to give us a little interpretation of those.
Yeah. Mayor, so from our last meeting, I wanted to follow up on a couple things. You know, there was some expression about understanding, a little bit about the overall capital improvement plan. Two main themes came out of that meeting. It was, can we focus on grouping together some of the capital projects and see how they're related and see what we want to do with them? And the other message I got was wanting to understand the impact without, I don't know, we're scaring anyone as to what the impact, because what had done, what we had done was the financial advisor to the town, Mr. Wren, our finance director at the time, had reached out and had him prepare some forward-looking impact on our debt structure. And the structure he had to work with was just the capital improvement plan for five years, and that loaded particular items all in one year. You'll recall that we had, and I think that was Councilor Rochette's concern, and so I took that to heart and went back and talked with our financial counselor and with Mr. Wren, and said, well, let's take a look at this and see if we were to take out a few things and see the impact. And subsequent to that, we came into the situation where we've been discussing the Police Station. So with that, I felt it was important that we would at least address that potential opportunity before us and how it may fit into the current debt structure. So with that, Mr. Wren prepared a graph that would indicate if we were to only do that with the, add the Police Station in the debt structure, and just see what the impact of that was. From that, I also took and looked at other options with the Police Station. One option I looked at was extending that, delaying that a year. And then another option was looking at delaying that for two years, and looking at what that impact would be. In addition to that, our previous meeting on the Police Station discussion had come up with some parameters around potential cash flow. He felt that that, that I felt as a budget chairman, that I owed that to the council to understand the cash flow impact, so that it wasn't just all in one year. So with that, the, Mr. Healy had worked with Public Billing Commission in there, and the police, the input there on the finances around it, the dollars amount associated with that, and then broke it up into the timing of when those bondings would take place. And so with that, that information fed as a, it looked like a pretty realistic cash flow, was then presented to Mr. Wren, who then estimated when the bonding would need to take place to fund that. And so that's what became the chart that I forwarded to the council members. And then from that, I did some option looking at, and see what the impact of that was. So I'd like to, and that's why I put kind of the packets together in the order that I did for the council members, and I would just kind of like to step through those, and then certainly open for even further discussion, any questions for me, anything along that lines. So the very first graph that's presented in there is the one that we first saw in our meeting about a month ago, in the strategy discussion. And in that, it went from about $7 million to, I probably have additional copies full of mine, team down here, so I wanted to make sure that, I know you have some of your copies, but I want to be able to have Town Manager and Clerk and our Corporation Council to be able to follow along. So I'm basically on the second page, and what that shows is what the concern was, okay, if we loaded everything in in the year that we thought that we'd like to kick off in a particular project. And that had us ramp from $7 million up to, three years out, to about $13 million in principal and interest. And so that was the alerting and concerning factor. If I go to the second graph, which indicates debt analysis, adding only the Police Station, I threw in some additional perspective on that particular graph, and I took from the, what's called the CAFRA report, the financial report, back to year 2006, the principal and interest that was built into the budgets in those preceding years. And we see the ramp of that, we know the majority of that, and I provided just a copy of that via email of all the things that we have currently bonded, where that was driven. So it begins, you know, the low point was about 2010, with about $1.5 million, and in year 2017, we're pretty close to $7 million. And from that, I tacked on, and I'll show a little more detailed graph on the next page, but I showed how adding the Police Station at this time would then ramp us by a year 2019 to a principal interest just shy of $9 million. So if we go to the next graph, this is the one that's shown a little bit more detail, it's gotten rid of the prior history, and it's just put it on a scale up to $9 million of the impact of adding Police Station at this time. And so this slide and the next three are the ones that I built in the next options. So if I go from this one that says add only Police Station, and go to the very next slide, I've titled that add only Police Station delayed one year. I did include 5 percent escalation, that's what I believe I heard in the conversation that would take place. And we see that that moves what was in 2019 out into 2020, where we have paid down on some of our debt, and moves that peak from roughly $8.75 million to about $8.5 million. If we go then to the next page, we see if we were to delay the station for two years, again, assuming escalation 5 percent per year, so roughly 10 percent, then lay that cash flow, principal interest payments into that, we see the effect of that, that keeps it under $8 million, you know, close to $7.8, $7.9 million for the foreseeable future. Again, this doesn't account for any additional capital improvement items that we may need to look to bond and put into it. But I felt it was helpful for the council to at least see, as we discuss options, what that impact might be going in that particular direction. We can certainly build other scenarios, but that was the one that I initially asked Mr. Wren to, so that we could focus our attention at least into this meeting on the Police Station and other projects that we might feel would be important. So any questions as I went through that? Kristina, please.
I apologize, I didn't get a chance to review this before the meeting, but does the, if we wait a year and wait two years scenario, does that include like inflation for the cost of materials and all that other stuff?
Yeah, it does. So when I referred to escalation, that would be equivalent to the inflation factor, and I heard in the meeting 5 percent, and so that's the assumption that I utilized. So, you know, roughly $16 million right out, and then, you know, add 5 percent into the next year, and I can give you kind of some exact figures if that's helpful, too.
No, that's all right, thank you.
Well, Dave, thanks for certainly the work on the graphs, and we like pictures, so a lot easier to follow, you know?
Pictures still a thousand words.
Yes, yes. But no, I appreciate all the time you put in on this, because it does give us the perspective that we need to see, looking forward as the town council and, you know, what our fiscal situation will be. And we don't even know what it's going to be next year with our state of Connecticut. We don't know what's going to happen. You know, we have to realize that we still have $21 million in cuts that we don't know how that's going to affect us this year yet, and recognizing that we already lost $400,000 from the municipal aid account, and from what I'm hearing from some of my friends in the state, next year is going to be much worse. So, you know, it's just something we have to consider, and these graphs help us plan something like this out.
Mayor, can I just add on the final sheet there that I needed to be made a little bit bigger, so that's why I put on by 11 by 17-
Good, good.
-that last package there.
We all need it bigger.
And from that, that was, again, the request and the discussion in our last month ago strategy session was, can we group together the capital items that we would want to consider in helping us, at least what the staff has collected in the capital improvement plan group has put together in helping us highlight some of the needs they see more directly than us may see it on occasion. So, you know, from that, the main departments that are grouped together is economic development, course education, fire, golf, libraries, municipal garage, police department, public buildings, public grounds, public works, recreation, and some townwide items. So those were, you know, the general groupings. As I went a little bit further in looking at it, you know, there could be some that kind of cross over. One, for example, was the middle of the page, you see libraries that say first floor expansion or elevator. And if you look a little further down into the, into the public buildings, it does speak of an elevator shaft, equipment installation, and some other items associated with the library. So you can start associating some of those together, just because I grouped them by department doesn't mean that they're not related, you know, description-wise, there may be some more associations. I did leave the numbers out there, and there was some concern expressed previously. I hope you look at those numbers just as a magnitude, not as, you know, actual numbers in the sense they're rough estimates. And I think what our staff would appreciate is if we come up with, and I give this as a kind of a prelude, that I don't think we'll come in, and Mr. Ross, you'd indicated about the ability to do that in a larger group. And what I would ask counselors to do is to, that we'd have a subsequent meeting where we could come back and look at these items, and, you know, I suggest kind of a, you can lay it out however you want, but it might be, you know, high, medium, low might be the simplest way to do that, and put those, you know, list it out in front, if you wanted to pencil them in and hand it to me, or you give me a shout, or whatever, we would, I'd be happy to be able to compile that, compile that from all council members, so that we could then focus our discussion on those. And we can talk a little bit further about that in, as we get further, you know, if we want to talk about this again as another item, as we've listed in the agenda item. But questions first on just how this particular 11 by 17 came together, if there was any questions on that? I'd be happy to address that. And certainly we can come to staff too, to ask them about, what does this particular one mean? I wanted to, again, as we were talking initially about the police station, there is, in this one, there's three listed for the police department, one meaning the new police station, and then existing police station department modifications, and the note was indicated they're only needed if a new police station didn't go forward, and then the radio system replacement. And we see that that radio system replacement was funded, and so it's really those two. And it's like an either or, it's not a, it's not a both, if you want to add those up. So, again, that's, that had already been built into the capital improvement plan as a potential option, so I do highlight that particular one. And I know above that, in the golf course, it talks about driving range netting, and again, I just highlighted the kind of the two highest dollar ones, but we can certainly talk about the other ones. That one was just the plug number. We know we've seen different presentations anywhere, depending on who you talk to, from 100,000 to, you know, 1 and 1/2 million. So that 2.2 is, again, just a plug number for magnitude of what folks had thought in the capital improvement plan. Other questions or comments on this?
No, I just wanted to question, the Berlin High School basketball tennis court is on an agenda tonight, the generator replacement, that was funded, right? You did that?
Yeah, so at the time of this publishing, it was not, it was subsequent to the budget adoption, that it didn't get updated to reflect that.
Okay.
So I agree that that was funded. And I think it reflects that, because in the column that says unfunded-
Yep.
-which is the second column, indicates that it was funded on 385. And what was the second one, Mr. Letty?
The generator at the high school, right?
Generator, the 485, yeah. So that indicates that it was requested and it was funded.
I understand. You're listening.
That's how Mr. Wren annotated it, as if it was unfunded, he put a dollar amount, and to what extent it was unfunded.
Got it.
Road improvements is another example, 1 and 1/2 million, that's near the bottom, and it's, it was funded.
Okay. Any other questions of Counselor Evans? No? All right. So, I mean, this, again, you know, we're trying to start some strategic planning earlier, so, you know, that's kind of what this is about for the council, instead of waiting until later in the year and trying to set temporaries, which we will work on throughout the year. So with this in mind, let's, we can discuss this towards the end of the meeting again. So let's move on to the rest of our agenda. The second thing here now is our ordinance for the tennis and the basketball courts.
This was the subject of the public hearing at last week's meeting. This is the request to fund the repairs or the replacement of the basketball courts and the tennis courts at Berlin High School. Originally in the budget, as David had just said, it was put in for $385,000 during the course of these last few months. It had been looked at by both Jack Healy and Jim Capades and Grounds and a couple of other staff members to see what the best method of replacement would be. What they have come up with is the post-tension concrete method, which is a little more expensive, but hopefully would last longer and perhaps would be not that much more expensive, given the fact that if you were to replace the asphalt, you might have to deal with some of the underlying drainage issues underneath, which would drive the cost up from the 385,000. So at this point, what is being sought is authorization to borrow up to 550,000, which the intent is still to borrow only the 385 and use LOCP funds for the difference. And Mr. Wren had checked earlier, is LOCP eligible, so that the difference could come from the LOCP? But to be on the safe side, we need to authorize $550,000 for the replacement of the tennis courts and the basketball courts at Berlin High.
All right. So this is an ordinance action, so what we're going to need to do now, we need a motion and a second, that the high school tennis and basketball courts ordinance be adopted. So they got a motion?
Okay. I'll do it all together, okay? Move to adopt, adopt an ordinance appropriating $550,000 for improvements to Berlin High School tennis and basketball courts, and authorizing the issue of $550,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, and also move to adopt the attached LOCP resolution as required by the state in order to apply for the LOCP funding.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so now we have some discussion. I just would like to lead it off. Remember that we had already approved 385,000 for this in our budget this year, when it was explored further, there was a better method, which was a little bit more expensive, which we had some discussions on at the public hearing, you know, went up quite a bit, obviously. But understanding that apparently, even if we went with the 385, that there was a lot of work that had to be done, probably in the old, with the old method of just using asphalt, that probably would have cost some significant, perhaps some significant money, so we might be at this figure anyway. So that's what we got out of the public hearing and from our public works. So that's how we ended up with the 550, and recognizing that this was, I guess, originally in the high school budget for the renovation, but it was taken out, so now we're left to deal with it. I guess the tennis team has not been able to play a home game in a while, and I, you know, I know my son plays basketball over there. And other courts are a mess too, so that's where we stand on this. Any comments, further discussion? Anything? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. I declare the ordinance adopted-
Thank you.
-in official language.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So, on to the next ordinance. So this one, obviously, we had a public hearing, several public hearings, I guess, over the timeframe. And now this is the police station. So I'll look for the same, I don't have my last page, I hope you have it. We need a, a motion and a second on this ordinance.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating $16,280,614 for the construction of a new town Berlin Police Facility, and authorizing the issue of $16,280,614 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I'll just reiterate my analysis from the earlier discussion item and the challenges before us in being able to put together a budget that is not going to have, you know, huge impact. Our grand list growth was approximately 400,000 last year. This could tack in a million right off, and just, we're struggling with what's going to come from the state, and I just express those concerns from a financial perspective. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
A year or so ago, then-Counselor Meg Morelli and I toured the police station. Chief was kind enough to give us the tour, and quite frankly, I was embarrassed that we put our officers in a facility like that. I would urge my council, fellow council members to vote for this. I think, especially in this day and age, we have to show our police officers that we support them and that we give them a safe facility in which to operate.
Okay, thank you.
I also toured the police station, and I agreed that definitely improvements need to be made. Unfortunately, our state finances are in such a mess, we don't know where our budget's going, and I just can't in good conscience put our taxpayers at risk for a large debt like this at this point. I'd like to move forward with possibly some renovations to make the existing police station safer and better. I'd like the council to blur that in the future. But right now, this is just too big a debt to put on our taxpayers right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like to reiterate what Dave Evans' graph showed, that maybe hopefully will be on our website. You know, our debt that we bonded already and voted for is still climbing a little, and these graphs show that just with the police station alone, it's still going to climb. And the graphs also show that there's a delta, you know, a year or two year out, where we can absorb this without impacting our taxpayers more. So I'm looking at it more that way. I mean, I don't want to, you know, what the building committee did with the police commission, I mean, they did a great job, they worked very hard on this, and I think we have to pay attention to the votes that the taxpayers gave us in the last couple of years. I mean, those should mean a lot. We changed the council, and, you know, we voted down the police station, it was an enormous number, and I think we got to pay attention to that.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on.
Yes.
One more thing.
Yes.
Just in response to Mr. Letty, they did vote down the police station at $21 million. This is a new project. I think it's important that we get everybody's say and not just, you know, the seven of us who serve here and, you know, the six of us sitting here tonight, so.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there for what it's worth.
All right, thank you. What I want to do, you know, we, I just want to put this in the record, because I think it's only fair that we do that. I received another letter from the Berlin Police Union, so I want to just read that in, because we did read the other letter the other week. Chief had made some comments, so I think it's fair that I read this into the record tonight before we vote. Mayor Kozinski, last week, Union President John Flynn sent you a letter recommending the suspension of the police station construction project. The letter was read at the town council meeting on July 19th. Questions were raised over the validity of our position and our motivation in sending you the letter. I would like to address those issues, as John is away on vacation, and this should be the last time you hear from us on the matter. The Herald article reporting on the meeting gave some people the impression that there was a rift in our union with regard to our stated position on the project. I assure you, there was not. The Union Board of Directors informed our 38 members of our intention to state our position on the matter. It was clear to us that while many of our members would have enjoyed occupying a new facility, most felt that this was not the time to build it. We gave our members a week to respond to us with their concerns. The results surprised even us. There was only one objection, 97% of our members expressed no opposition. Our members may indeed have had varying reasons for their votes. For my own part, I always thought we could remodel our existing building for a fraction of the cost. In my opinion, we have a lot of wasted space that could be put to use. An addition would not be necessary, just basic updating and remodeling. My opinion is irrelevant, however. The only opinion that matters is that of the electorate. The decision to build or not to build went to referendum less than a year ago. 38% voted in favor, 62% voted against. Our citizens weren't ready for this project, just as Lieutenant Susi did not want to be associated with any effort to suspend the building of a new facility. The rest of us don't want to be associated with any efforts to disregard the clear will of the citizens we serve. Chief Fitzgerald was quoted as saying that the union's stated position on the new facility was a tactic due to a stalemate in the bargaining of their labor contract. I understand why he would feel that way. Relations between management and labor have been far from ideal. However, the members of our union are quite capable of separating their feelings about their collective bargaining agreement and the construction of a building that would be for their benefit. As evidence that our contract negotiations have nothing to do with our position on the construction project, I offer the following. At the time of the referendum, 10 of our members lived in Berlin and were eligible to vote on the issue. Of the 10, 2 voted in favor of it, 4 voted against it, and 4 abstained. In other words, only 20% of our members voted in support of the project. The referendum was held in November of 2015. Contract negotiations began in January of this year, two months later. Again, we are grateful to the chief, the police commission, and all others involved in this endeavor, but now is not the time to undertake it. That's signed Mark Sinis and Vice President Berlin Police Union. I thought it was important we get everything on the record.
Mayor, could I have a copy of that sometime?
You sure can. You could have one right now. So we're in the discussion stage still, everyone, you know, it's, yes?
I'd like to comment on the voters deciding. I too would rather have a referendum, but unfortunately, our charter doesn't have a provision for the council to send it to referendum, so.
I volunteer to work with you and anybody else from your party who would like to take out a petition.
I don't think it's going to happen. There is a mechanism, if it is turned out, then I have to petition, I guess also. Perhaps we could look at that.
Well, just that, if we turn it down tonight, the town people have no say.
Right.
If it goes, if we report it out favorably and someone petitions it, that's fine. And then the people have their say. I mean, I'm voting yes for the people to have their vote cast in the referendum.
That's right.
Okay. Very difficult decision we face tonight. Probably, for me, more difficult maybe than most. I spent thirty years in law enforcement, as you guys know. So, it's very difficult for me to make a decision here. You know, we kind of wear several hats up here as the council, but we do represent the people. You know, my heart and my former colleagues, I'd give the police whatever they want at any time. That's from my past experience. But, you know, it's a difficult position to be in as being, serving on the town council. We are elected as leaders of the community. You know, leaders have to sometimes make difficult decisions. It's very difficult. It's been a very difficult budget year. I mean, we see what happened with the state this year. Four hundred thousand came out of our budget after we passed our budget, after the referendum passed the budget. And we were very lucky, as someone, I think, mentioned in one of the meetings, and I feel the same way, that we were able to refund some of our debt and we were able to pick up that four hundred thousand dollars. So, somebody upstairs really liked us this year. We were very lucky. But, we worked hard on the budget, all of us, especially Consular Evans and the town staff and everyone. Going forward next year, I only see worse figures from the state. They're talking about perhaps even cutting some of that educational grant money. We don't know what they're going to do. Nobody knows what they're going to do. We didn't know what they were going to do this year until, we still don't know what we're going to do with the other twenty million they cut. So, it puts us in a very, very difficult scenario, very, very difficult decision. But, you know, I think we've got to go forward with some, with some fiscal responsibility. I think, you know, that we just have to look at that. We can't just make that decision in a vacuum. And I think something, we're voted on this council, as many of us have stated and many in the public have stated, they put us here to make a decision and be leaders. And that's what sometimes we have to do. So, my opinion would be not, not to go forward with it at this time. Looking at the debt charts, are debts still climbing for the next two years? I find it would be really irresponsible as a, as a citizen, never mind as the mayor and the town councillor, to add more debt at this point in time, not knowing what we face next year and perhaps the year after from the state. It's all flowing downhill, folks. It's all coming to us as property owners in whatever town or city we live in. What I want to do, though, we'll take the vote, obviously, and then we could talk about some options, depending upon how the vote goes. I, too, I understand, you know, we had a referendum. The people spoke. We did give them their opportunity. If we vote yes, there's nothing to say that it will go to referendum, and we will have passed this. And I couldn't in good faith vote that way. So, I, you know, it's, it's a very difficult scenario. It's a very difficult budget year. I know everyone's put in a lot of time and effort. I know this has been going around town for quite a while, and it's, it's taken several years to get here. But, I don't know. I don't, I don't really see any other decision that would make sense to me personally. That's my opinion. So, with that in mind, do you have any other comments? All right, so, good motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Hold on. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote.
We can do that?
Great. And the motion was to bond for the sixteen?
Correct.
Just making sure.
Councilor Campanelli?
Yea.
Councilor Evans?
Nay.
Councilor Letty?
Nay.
Councilor Pignessa?
Nay.
Councilor Rosso?
Yes.
Mayor Kozinski?
Nay.
Motion is just yet.
Okay, thank you. Now, with that said, chief, and we wanted, we got, we have to do something for you, chief. And we're, we're going to do something. You know, we actually noticed on that chart that we looked at today, we had two and a half million dollars for renovation of the police department. I know you need some different rooms. I know you need some different things. I really want to start immediately. And I don't really want any delay. And I think we need to move forward. And, you know, two million, whether it costs that or less, I don't know. I mean, I know there's some, there's a storeroom downstairs with a bunch of stuff in it. I really don't see why we can't clean that out and start with something there. I, you know, we could look at what your immediate needs are. Obviously, we voted for the radio system. We know that. You need that. But, I want to give you some relief, you know, quickly, if we can. So, hang on. So, I want to give you some relief quickly. So, if we could, you know, meet with you, I'm happy to meet with you with whoever, town manager, the rest of the council, whatever, and come up with a plan in place here, police commission, to do something for you quickly. You may have revisited this before. I haven't. It is new to me, being on the council. I've certainly followed it along in the newspaper as a non-council member. But, I think sometimes we need to move a little bit quicker than we have. And I think this is a time that we can spend some money and give you some release for the, relief for the short term and look at this a couple of years down the road when our debt load goes down. Our debt load is still climbing. I, I just, it's just, it's bad timing. And a lot of people in town have said that, and the voters have voted on it once. But, but I want to give you some relief. So, I'd like to do that as quick as possible within the next month or so to get going on and see what we can do.
Just on a note, the police department was kind enough to come up with some money to push the project forward for the design bill that was before us. Maybe we can get an idea from the building commission what those bids came in at so we can appropriate some money to push that forward faster, like you said.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I noticed in here, it was two thousand for the radios, or, sorry, two million for the radio things that we had talked about earlier, and then another two and a half million to try and renovate the current space.
Right.
So, that's four and a half million, plus Dave's five percent, which I had about eight hundred thousand annually. So, if we push it two years, that's one point six million. So, that's like another six point one or two million dollars that we're tacking on to the cost of a police station. So, my question is, are we just not doing the police station? Are these interim fixes? What?
Yeah, like I said, I think it's an interim fix. I think down the road, we're going to get a new police station. But, right now, to take on that debt with not knowing what's going to happen next year with our budget, we have no clue what's getting cut out of our budget. And I suspect it'll be quite a large amount.
Okay. This just seems a little penny wise and pound foolish. We're going to be spending that much money later on down the road that we're going to spend extra now just to hold us over for a couple of years. It just seems...
Well, two, two million, certainly not sixteen or seventeen million. That's quite a big difference, I would say, at least.
But, that wouldn't hold us over for two years. That would hold us over for twenty, probably with our buildings, we'd go, what, fifty years?
If I could just clarify though, the two million for the radio was subtracted from the original twenty-one million dollar proposal.
The proposal was sixteen million?
No, I'm saying the first police station included it. That's one reason why the number came down. We were already funded part of it.
We funded that in this year.
We funded the radio system already. So, it isn't...
Okay.
Follow me and count it twice.
So, yeah, still another three, well, four point two million that we're basically band-aiding.
It will be more expensive when we do build a new building to move it. There'll be a cost. But, right now, we've already funded the radio system that was in the first one that went to referendum.
Right. So, and I didn't even add that cost into my just figurings here. But, that seems like a lot of money that we're just spending to hold us over for a couple of years.
Well, the radio system needed to be fixed, no matter what. We already heard that, yeah.
Right. We agreed, and we did that. But, the other stuff is...
Well, again, you know, we had the vote. We took the vote. And sometimes we've got to make a decision with the facts in front of us. And I know we could, we're trying, we're trying to look down the road and see when we could, we could do something. And that's when our debt load goes down in two or three years. And that's the decision that most of us thought was the prudent one, to be fiscally responsible for the town. I mean, that's just, that's, you know, unfortunately, that's what happened. And I know, appreciate all the hard work the police commission did and the chief did and everyone. I understand that. But, I think it's the prudent decision to make at this time. So, with that in mind, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is...
High school.
The high school.
Report on the high school.
We had hoped to be able to have Tom Smith come, but he has been on vacation. Jack Healy's going to pinch-hit and give a little update. We'll have Tom come to a September meeting. Jack is prepared to just give a brief update because it's been a while. But, I think we're nearing the end. Jack, if you want to come up, please.
Hi, Jack. I don't know what you, what you, how much detail you want. But, in a nutshell, they're on schedule and on budget. But, that's good news.
That's good news.
It appears that the, most of all, the classrooms will be turned over by the time school opens. Projected to have the auditorium and music suite done by September thirtieth. Now, we had a job meeting today, and that's the latest, so that's the latest information from the...
That's earlier than proposed, isn't it?
Well, yeah, a little bit, yeah. A couple of weeks earlier than proposed.
That's awesome.
They're nervous about saying that to you. But, you know, that's, that's where they are at this point. Budget-wise, we are, we are tracking on budget. So, you know, we're at the budget of eighty-three plus a million, you know, million dollars. So, things right now are going along relatively well. We've gotten past the point where you should have, you know, very many unknowns come up, crop up on, you know, they've opened walls. They're in the process of renovating. So, you know, unforeseen circumstances, unforeseen soil conditions, things like that are probably not going to come up.
Great.
As far as any other details, I'm, you know, if there's anything else you want.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
That's all good. Thanks, Jack.
This is great.
Yeah.
I saw this on the agenda.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we already did Griswold School. Number six?
Yes, about a month or so ago, we had transferred some funds into the outside legal for the labor council. We had thought we had provided enough to get us to the end of the year. But, unfortunately, we are still a little short due to some of the arbitration hearings that we've had to go to. So, we are looking to transfer four thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to the corporation council outside legal expert account from, there are some funds available in the pension, health insurance, probate court, and organizational fees.
Okay, great.
All right.
Motion on that?
Move to transfer four thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to the corporation council outside legal expert account from the pension, health insurance, probate court, and organizational fees account.
Great. Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Just maybe we could move, right, we, didn't we add, I know we have seven. We're at the charter revision. I know we're going to get to that in a moment. But, should we move, can we, can we get to the motion number eight? I guess, can we move eight to seven? So, that way, that kind of clears up our schedule.
Yeah.
This, we, the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development has awarded the town a grant for a hundred thousand dollars for the environmental assessment of three oh three New Britton Road. That's the Connecticut sand and stone property that was, was the subject of the agenda item at last meeting for the sale of the tax lanes. So, this is, we need to authorize me to execute the assistance agreement with the state.
Okay. Motion on this? Or whoever?
Sorry, I was reading. This is the Brownfields grant, right?
Yes.
Move to authorize the town manager to execute the assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut and the Connecticut Department of Economic Development, Economic and Community Development through the, through their municipal Brownfield Assessment Grant Program in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for three oh three New Britton Road.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. All right. So, now we're back to our, so, what we have here is our Charter Revision Commission. I think we all were a little mistaken on our timeline. So, we, we are here tonight to actually have our conference with our esteemed members of the Charter Revision Commission. Appreciate all your hard work. And I know you still have some work to do. So, we appreciate going forward, all the stuff you got to do. Believe me, we get it. So, maybe the best way is to...
Paul has a listing.
A summary? Yeah, a listing?
If we can have Chairman Arthur Seckelmark.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
And, excuse me, ma'am, sorry. If anybody wants a copy of the amendment, they're here. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If I may, I'd like to ask the other members of the Charter Revision Commission to come up and sit in the front row. I'll identify them for the record. This is supposed to be a conference. Therefore, I've asked any one of them to speak up on any particular matter, should they choose, or should there be a question directed to them. So, with me this evening is the Vice Chairman of the Commission, Sam Lamavio, and Commissioners George Miller, Dennis Kern, and Bart Bouvet. My missing one?
Dennis.
Dennis. I said Dennis.
You're missing one, or two. You're missing two.
Yeah, two are missing, huh?
Brad and Maggie.
Yeah. That's correct. There are two missing tonight.
Two missing, two missing.
Here we go.
So, Paul, I guess you can, I know we sent the stuff back to you, and we appreciate you guys having another meeting and going over that. And if you could, obviously, go over the changes, and then it'd be great to have you or any one of your commission members. I know there was questions last time that some of us probably couldn't answer, you know, on the council because it's your work, you know, we're just trying to review it. So, we would appreciate that. And obviously, this is our conference. So, this is our give and take time to go over whatever other issues or questions we may have with you guys. So, we appreciate you being here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the best way to do this, perhaps, is to start with the list of town council concerns or recommendations that was compiled by the town clerk after the last meeting. As you know, there were three of us in attendance at last meeting, and I at least took notes of all the comments and the suggestions. All of those comments were brought back to our meeting of July twenty-first, two days after you met, and they were discussed at length. So, the changes we actually made are on the sheet that I handed out. And I'd like to touch on each one of those as I go through the list of the town council concerns. So, I'll take this Board of Finance, Town Council, Board of Education, in that order. The three biggest areas that the, the committee felt were of vital importance to change was, were the, first, the reinst, reinstitution of the Board of Finance, the election of a popularly elected mayor on the town council, and the change in the way of the election of the Board of Education. On all of those votes, the committee voted unanimously, except for one. The vote for the change on the Board of Education was a six to one vote. But, all the other votes were unanimous. And there was an awful lot of discussion on all of these matters. And there was a tremendous amount of positive input by all the members. The centerpiece of the changes, as I said at a previous meeting, is the return of the Board of Finance. It's hard to understand how this board may work if you have not, if you were not in town and experienced the government with the Board of Finance, the way it previously worked. But, the Board of Finance is not another layer of bureaucracy, okay? It is a check and balance on the spending of the town council. And we have not always seen the town council, frankly, make the best decisions, okay? And now, sometimes the town council succumbs to pressure groups. Sometimes it makes a decision that the voters vote down at referendum. But, sometimes the council, when it makes these decisions, even if the council thereafter gets voted out of office, the taxpayers are still stuck with the bill, if you will. So, the Board of Finance is a check on all that, okay? It is similar to the House and the Senate, where the Senate members have longer terms. They tend to be more senior, more older members, members with more experience in government. And they are more deliberative. They take the time to look at these ideas in a way that maybe is one step removed from the pressure of special interest groups and pressure groups. And that's how it worked in the past. And what it led to was a slow, steady growth in the town and the town's finances. What you have since the council manager, former government, has come in, in my opinion, having been involved in the first six councils, is we have no tax increase, huge tax increase. No tax increase, big tax increase. We have this. The Board of Finance led to this, okay? Steady growth within the ability of the town to pay, but with results. And you just look at every school in town, Berlin High School, all the elementary schools, this building, you know, this police station, all the buildings in town. Those were all constructed under the recommendation of the Board of Finance. And the Board of Finance did its job in getting the most for its money. And the Board of Finance did its job in getting the most for its money. Now, I understand there were some people who were upset about the Board of Finance because there were often times where the board did not approve enough money that, you know, what they thought was enough money, or what they wanted. But the board, like I said, more deliberative, looked at the whole picture and the ability of the public to pay for it. So, we have included that. Now, this Board of Finance is a little bit different than the previous board. The previous board, the parties could only run as many people as could be elected, okay? So, you had three people on each, no more than three people of each party. And if a party could only elect, say, two at one election, they could only run two. Our proposal allows each party to nominate up to three at each election. So, you'd have three running, say, in two thousand seventeen, and then three running in two thousand and nineteen. Three on each side. Now, the parties may or may not vote to nominate more than what the number that can be elected. So, if the Republicans could only elect one in one particular year, they may only run one, okay? But chances are, they may run two or even three. And the reason for that is because, at least in the Republican Party, members are elected at a caucus. So, if the town committee says, "We only want to nominate one person this year," several people can come to the caucus and simply get one vote and be on the ticket for the Board of Finance, and that'll give the voters a choice. And both parties can do that. Now, the Democratic Party has their own way of doing things. Maybe it's a little bit more controlled. But at least in the Republican Party, you can very easily have three people running for one or two spots. And we think that will give voters a healthy choice in the Board of Finance. But the dynamics of the Board of Finance with three members of each party, with perhaps independents sprinkled in, means that compromise is required. No one party can just ram through their agenda. There must be cooperation. And in my opinion, as I've said many times, I think this town needs more cooperation from all aspects, from both parties. It was brought up, what happens if the board is deadlocked on the budget? Okay, good point. I don't think that's ever happened, talking from people who have met with, who have been on the Board of Finance before. We did add a provision, though, that says if the Board of Finance fails to recommend a budget to the Town Council, the budget for the current fiscal year shall be submitted to the council, okay? So, there will be a budget, no matter what, going to the council. The council then can do what it wants with the budget. Obviously, it can't raise the budget. Under our other proposal, it can now reduce the budget by line item, or it can reject the budget, in which case it goes to the Joint Board. That still has to go to referendum. If the public thinks that that is too low, they will defeat it, and then it'll go back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration, and then could go back to the Board of Finance again if it's defeated at a second referendum.
So, Paul, I know that's the point we had brought up. So, yeah, so let's say it goes forward, however it comes to the council. If it comes from the, the Board of Finance agrees three to three, goes to the council. Obviously, we can't raise it without the supermajority, but we can lower it line item, line by line, right? If we want to lower it, just with the council vote, not the supermajority.
That's correct. Under our new proposal, the council has three choices. They can either accept the budget and send it to referendum. They can reject it, in which case it goes to the Joint Board, which can do anything with a two-thirds vote. Or the council can reduce the budget by line item. That is very similar to the way the previous town meeting, former government, was set up, where the town meeting itself could reduce the budget by line item. So, you would be able to do that.
Why can't they increase by line item?
Because then you would basically render the Board of Finance irrelevant. Yes.
Before we go, I just, I heard you say something about the Democratic Party and, you know, how there might be more control, and I just wanted to point out that our party works very similar to the way your party works, Mr. Argosi. We have a primary on August 9th because the person that the Democratic Town Committee nominated is being challenged by another person. They got signatures, you're entitled to do that. There's no, you know, you're saying that your chair has, doesn't have as much control, or whatever. It's basically the same, so...
I respectfully disagree with you. We elect our, we nominate our candidates by caucus. That means we meet in a room, and every registered Republican can come to that room and nominate, be nominated for any office, and be voted on by all the Republicans in Burlein.
We do the same thing.
If you do, then that's new. I was always under the impression that you did it by town committee.
For, to elect members to our town committee, we have a caucus.
Okay, but who nominate, who nominates the members for municipal office? Is it a caucus, or is it the town committee?
Town committee, it's town committee.
Okay.
So, our town committee members are elected by caucus.
Okay, so we can agree there perhaps is a difference. Let's move on to the Charter Revision.
Okay, thanks. The Town Council and the election of the, election of the mayor directly. The, the mayor is currently, as you know, is elected amongst the members, really, of the majority party. This was, again, unanimous decision. We felt that the mayor should be elected, should be held more accountable. There should be a direct election of the mayor, and we feel that this would give the mayor more authority, a little bit more, a little more, I don't know, really power, but a little bit more authority and... What's the right word here? Gravita, if you will. So, the mayor, instead of being appointed by his fellow councilman or her fellow councilman, would be directly elected by the public, and therefore would have a little bit more of a say in implementing the mayor's agenda. Now, it was suggested to look at Rocky Hill and Newington charters, who both elect their mayor. We did this. We looked at those charters extensively during our deliberations, you know, in April and May. And those charters are actually very similar. They have nine-member councils, actually eight-member councils, with a separately-elected mayor. The problem is that the charters allow for five of the eight to be of one party. So, the election for Town Council can be, let's say, five Republicans, three Democrats, okay? And then you have a separate election for mayor. Now, if the mayor, if the Republican candidate for mayor wins, that's great, okay? He's in a six to three majority. He can presumably implement his agenda. But what if that mayor is, what if the Democrat wins as mayor? Now, all of a sudden, you have a mayor who's elected, defeats his opponent, but he's a member of the minority party in the, in the Town Council. And we felt that just doesn't work, because people are electing the mayor because they want the mayor to run their town, to be in charge of the policy aspects of the town. And the mayor would be in the minority party on the council, and we felt that was just a recipe for dysfunction. So, we instead modeled our suggestions after the way Burlein used to elect their mayor with the Board of Selectmen. Now, that was a three-member board, where you had four people running for a three-member board. You had two people running for selectmen, which then was, became mayor. And then you had two people running for selectmen, not first selectmen, but selectmen, who then they became deputy mayor. So, those two members were pretty much always elected. And whoever became the mayor or the first selectman was automatically in the majority. Now, one time, that didn't happen, okay? And it was the last time, in nineteen ninety-three, where Bob Peters was reelected mayor, and Art Powers and Tom Varanisi became the two deputy mayors. But we feel that the mayor will run on a slate, okay? And the slate will allow the mayor to implement his policy. Now, again, similar with the Board of Finance, the voters can elect six, they can vote for six members of the Town Council. Okay, now, each party can only win three seats, but each party can also elect six, I mean nominate six. So, again, with the caucus system, you know, a town committee may say, "Okay, one, two, three. We have three candidates for Town Council." But if there's a fourth member who wants to run, there's no way to stop that person from running, whether he is in a member of the Republican Party, or if he is an independent, unaffiliated voter who gets the signatures, which is only one percent, very easy to get on the ballot. You can have all kinds of people running for the Town Council. And I would add that this happened many times when this form of government was established in nineteen ninety-five. For several years, when we had a nine-member Town Council, the, both parties ran nine candidates, and they could only win six. And so, you had eighteen people, and actually, the first year, you had three unaffiliateds. You had twenty-one people running for nine spots. You had all kinds of choices.
I have a question for you. You, and this may just be how I heard it, but you mentioned that the mayor could run on a slate with the Town Council candidates. Have you cleared that with election enforcement? Because I think there might be differences with how those campaigns would be funded.
Okay, the mayor would run as an individual on, for mayor.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
As far as separating the two candidates, that has to, I mean, the two campaigns, that has to be worked out. I don't, I don't know exactly what the election law is for...
Okay, I heard you say that he would run on a slate, or he or she would run on a slate with the councilors, and I don't know that that's...
Well, what I meant by slate is whether or not you separated the financing mechanisms of those two campaigns. I don't know, actually, if that could be done or not. But certainly, you would say, you'd have two prominent candidates running for mayor, okay? So, you'd have, you know, the Campanelli slate versus the Kaczynski slate for mayor, or Campanelli versus Kaczynski for mayor. You know, elect the Republican slate, elect the Democratic slate. That's how I foresee it. And the candidate, and the public would then vote, knowing that if they elected Campanelli for mayor, she would be in the majority and would be able to implement her agenda. Same thing if the Kaczynski candidate run for mayor, won for mayor, excuse me.
Councilor Campanelli, you would have to have different campaign financing groups, unless you go strictly through Town Committee. But you would have, it's even done in my hometown, that when we run mayor, the council is kind of like, and Board of Ed is all group, you know, they have different campaign financing statements that need to be filed.
So, you put literally every person on one slate?
Right. But they kind of like, they say vote the Republican ticket or vote the Democratic ticket. I think that's what Chairman Argosy is getting at.
Got it.
You are right, as far as they would have different campaign financing requirements.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, yeah, and as George points out, the candidate for mayor who loses could be elected to the Town Council. Now, that was also in the previous form of government. Candidate who ran for mayor could be on the executive board at the time. We thought that this was important because we felt that each party would nominate perhaps its most senior council member for the position of mayor. And if the losing candidate lost, we felt it wasn't good for the town to have that person completely be out of the government. Therefore, we made him eligible and had his votes count for a position on the Town Council, which could then push one of the other members off the Town Council. Again, we didn't make any changes regarding this matter since the last meeting, but this is just a rundown of, you know, the thinking of the commission. Okay, with the Board of Education. If the council will recall, our initial suggestion was to have the Board of Education elected similarly to the Town Council, except being nine members, for two-year terms, and with no more than a five to four majority. After the commission's public hearing, there were a number of speakers who felt that two years was not sufficient amount of time for the Board of Education members to serve. Thereafter, we changed our recommendation to be four-year terms. We felt, however, with four-year terms, having a Board of Education election every four years was not frequent enough. So, we made, we broke the board down to five members being elected one year and four members being elected two years later. In response to the comments by the Town Council on July 19th, we have changed that again. And it is really the feeling at the Board of Education, I'm sorry, with the Charter Revision Commission, that the Board of Education should be elected like the Town Council. With two-year terms, voters can vote for any nine, which means the parties can nominate nine. They can elect no more than six, however. We did change it to a six to three majority as a maximum. So, no party can hold more than six. The minority party can have no less than three. Of course, there always can be unaffiliateds.
What was the logic for switching from five to four to six to three?
I think the logic was the result of some comments made by the Town Council. We were trying to be responsive to some of the comments made by the council. You know, the committee really felt that all boards and commissions in Burlein, elected or appointed, should have no more than a simple majority. I am a, as I've said three or four times, I'm a big advocate of that. I feel that boards and commissions work better when one party cannot ram through its agenda. However, with the Board of Education, there was a feeling that, okay, well, we've had a nonpartisan history in the past. We're going to change the way this is elected. Maybe we should keep it six to three. So, there were some comments by the, by the council on that. There were some council, comments by the public on that. And the council, the commission felt that the most important change with the Board of Education was electing all the members at once, so that, again, candidates could run on a slate, and the public can be able to vote on that slate on a platform, to be able to change the direction, change the policies of the Board of Education if it so wanted to. Or it could vote to keep the status quo if the public was happy with the way the Board of Education was operating. But right now, you really can't change anything on the Board of Education because you have three members running any particular year. Most people don't know who they are. There's very little about them in any newspaper whatsoever. Without a party affiliation, you don't know where they stand. And the committee, as well as many, many, many members of the public, want a change in the vote on the Board of Education.
So, I have a question for you. You said the committee and many members of the public.
Yes.
When I reviewed the minutes for the meeting that I was not able to attend, I would say that the split, and I'm being generous here, is about two-thirds to one-third who wanted to keep the Board of Ed nonpartisan. Were you looking at something different, or the same thing?
No, we were looking at, you mean, the people who spoke?
Yeah, I counted, yeah.
Right, well, obviously, we listen to everybody who comes in, just as the Town Council does at every public hearing. You have to look at the town as a whole, though. In my experience, obviously, with going to public hearings, whether they be on charters or budgets, you tend to have pressure groups show up at Town Council hearings, especially on the budget, always asking for more money every time. The job of an elected official, or even an appointed official, is to look at the whole picture. Obviously, to take into account what was said at the public hearing, but also to take into account what we feel is best for the town. And we feel that the vote on this is the best thing for the town.
So, here's my question, because you said you believe the majority of the public wants this. What I'm trying to figure out is what you base that on? Because we're all elected by a majority of the public as well, and I think that's important for all of us to know. Because in everything that I've seen, a majority of the public has come out against it. So, if there's a group of people you're talking to, I would like to be able to personally phone them and have a conversation with them as well. I mean, I, it's information I want to hear.
Listen, I, we could go back to the, which I've done many times, going door to door. I know we all did a lot of it, but I heard the same story from a lot of people. We got to change the Board of Ed. I've heard that.
So, okay, but that's...
I can't give you every house, but I could probably go back and retrace my steps and find every house, because I have a pretty good memory.
That would be great, actually.
But, but understand, Kristen, this is going to a vote of the people of the town. They're going to vote yes or no. That's where it sits, right?
Well, it's, yes, but it's our job to put forward something that's responsible, and I'm trying to ask questions that elicit information so that I can make my...
Well, no, no, you're trying to say that the majority doesn't want this. We're saying the voters are going to...
No, I'm trying to find out where he got the information, because he said that he thinks the majority wants it.
It doesn't matter what the commission thinks. It matters what goes to the people, all right? They're going to, they're going to vote on this.
We have to vote on this tonight, and I want...
No, we're voting actually, like, tonight.
Okay, two weeks. So, I want to know where they're getting their information from. So, when I make my choice, I vetted all of that information.
That's fine.
I've made an adequate vote, and I think this is a question that should be answered. And if he doesn't have an answer, then that's fine, that's, we can move on, but...
But like we talked about earlier, I think tonight, we can't just go by who showed up at a meeting, because if thirty people showed up, and twenty said they were for, and ten were against it, I wouldn't say, "Oh, the whole town's against it," or "The whole town's for it." I wouldn't know.
I'm not saying that they are. I'm just saying all of the information that I've seen, and like I asked last time, I want to see facts. I want to see numbers. I want to see, Mr. Evans showed up with charts today. I like charts. I want to see charts. I want to see information. I like charts, I wanna see charts, I wanna see information. I haven't seen anything yet.
Well, we can ask the other members of the Charter Commission, or Paul, to, you know, wh- whatever he wants to expound upon, but again, we're just trying to get a, a feel for this, and.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. I think this is important. Data is very important to me. So I, I want to make sure that I'm basing my opinion on data, which is why the question, and if you don't have an answer, then that's okay.
No, I do have an answer. Um, I've been in local government for, say, twenty-five years. Uh, I was on this board for twelve years, campaigning countless times and again. I listened to thousands of people over the years. I went door-to-door about six times. A few of those times, I hit every house in town. I've talked to thousands of people about all kinds of issues, and there is a sizable percentage of, of the town, the taxpayers, that really dislike the way the Board of Education operates. And they cannot ever change it. There's no way to change it. Now, will this pass in November, if it goes to ballot? I don't know, but certainly, I believe that this commission feels that it is the best thing for the town and our charter.
Okay.
And I certainly hope the town council will vote to send this to referendum, to let the people decide. And if they decide they like the current form of electing the Board of Education, then so be it. We can live with that. There hasn't been a vote on the Board of Education since, I believe, the sixties. All right? It's time to have a vote on this issue, and we've done the, the best we can to, to make it so that, um, the people will have the best, the best option in front of them. And we feel that, similar to the way the town council is elected now, the Board of Education, uh, could be elected. And as far as charts, it was brought up last meeting about, uh, did the commission do its homework, and, uh, look at other towns, and how the Boards of Education in other towns run, and, and comparative data? Well, in fact, we did. I'll be happy to share this with you.
Excellent, yes.
But the, um, you know, if you've been on the board, which I know you have, Ms. Campanelli, the district reference groups.
DURG, yes.
That, the DURGs that Berlin is in, um, you know, I mean, all you have to do is look at these, they're broken down by eight, uh, grades and subjects, so.
Is that the board presentation?
Literacy, yes. This is the board presentation.
I think I have it if it's, if it was pre this year.
October thirteenth of fifteen.
Okay, so I should have that still.
Yeah. Now, the point is that Berlin, on every one of these charts, is either in the middle, or maybe a little bit below the middle, and a few of them were, you know, thankfully, close to the top.
Yeah, so that's the new smarter.
But generally, we're, we're in the middle, okay? Uh, grade five, science, literacy, math, um.
That's the S-BAC test you're looking at?
More science.
Which was brand-new as of last year? Um, so I just wanted to, so now that we have data, now we can have a discussion about the data.
Right.
Did you take that into account when you were making your decision?
We took this into account. Now, let me, let me explain that I don't think this information is of much value, because out of all the towns in our DURG, and just so everybody knows, I'll read those for you. Um, let's see, Colchester, Old Sabre, Cromwell, East Lime, Rocky Hill, Shelton, Southington, Clinton, Bethel, Milford, Stonington, East Granby, Berlin, DURG D, not sure what that is, Weathersfield, Branford, Watertown, Waterford, Ledyard, Newington, East Hampton, New Milford, Windsor, Wallingford, and North Haven. Every one of those towns, whether they are below us or above us, has a partisan Board of Education. So I, I don't know really what it proves by saying, well, you know, so many towns are above us, so many towns are below us. All the towns around us do it differently than us. And if you're gonna get one conclusion out of this, it's that the way we elect the Board of Education does not put us at the top by any means. In fact, if anything, we're a little bit below average. And obviously, we all hope that that goes up, but.
That's the twenty.
The nonpartisan Board of Education does not put Berlin ahead. That is pretty clear.
It doesn't put Berlin behind either, which was the point that I was trying to make in requesting the data. And if I knew you were just going to recycle a 2015 Board of Education report that I already had, then I wouldn't have asked.
Kristen, Kristen, you asked for facts, we gave you facts, now you're unhappy with the facts.
I already asked. I'm not, it's not that I'm not happy with the facts, I have that information. What I was hoping is that somebody would go and.
Can we let him finish his presentation, and, and then we will discuss it? That's what the point of this is tonight.
The point of this is.
Please, yeah, George.
And we're trying to give some, we're trying to flesh it out a little bit, which, that was a question that I had, I know you had, many of us had.
Right.
So those are some facts that are on paper.
Yes, those are.
And I guess we could all refute any statistic that's out there, we all know that.
Right, but that's the point of getting them.
But that's a good reference group to look at, right? Can we agree upon that?
It's not a reference group, it's, okay, so.
Oh, it's not? Oh, what is it then?
Called the district reference group, it's a DURG, it's how much money is.
Oh, district reference group, okay. I, I mean, come on, we, we're getting some facts, let's finish the discussion, then we could talk about it.
You don't know what, ah, you know what, it's not even worth it.
So, just, if I could add a couple other comments, and this is for the edification of everybody, okay, so you guys can hear, 'cause, um.
What does that mean?
That, that means I'm not gonna convince Counselor, um, Campanelli.
You know, I think you should be a little more respectful to the people up here.
I think other people should be respectful of our charter, too. When, um, Mr. Dacey came up and told us all the work that we did was absolute garbage.
What does that have to do with anything? This is a council meeting, and I expect our mayor to.
Disrespectful, I just wanna make sure that everybody.
George.
Is aware that I'm not only speaking to Counselor Campanelli, I want, want to share some information with everybody. I'm sorry if I was disrespectful, I didn't mean to do that.
All right, let's just keep to the facts, let's get the facts out here, so we can review what we need to do. All right, please.
There were, there were a couple of other factors that came into account in terms of, um, looking at partisan versus nonpartisan. Um, we tried to do a lot, a lot of research, um, basically on the web, 'cause we don't have anything in Connecticut to go by, because we are the only nonpartisan Board of Education. So there is no anecdotal evidence elsewhere. I'll, I'll point out a couple of things, there have been efforts mounted to allow nonpartisan Boards of Education to be a, an elective of towns in their charter if they want to be. It's been defeated twice. Um, it was defeated recently, I think in 2015, or it never got through, uh, the Democratic, um, Senate and House, and then there was a time, a long, long time ago, where it was proposed again, and it was defeated then, too, by, and in both these times where, you know, there was, people were not in favor of it. The predominant reason, especially a long, long time ago, was that people, when I vote for somebody, and they have such a big impact on the town, I wanna know what their philosophy, I wanna know what they believe in, and so forth. I wanna know their political ideologies and so forth. That was a couple of the reasons that were given. Um, a couple of other things that, that we took on account, and we've talked about this before, is this syndrome called like the down-ballot type of syndrome. Basically, where, because they're non-affiliated, um, they're at the bottom of, of the list, and, um, when people get to there, and, and there hasn't been a lot of press about them, they don't know what their political beliefs are, and we've seen it in the results, a lot of people don't even bother, um, voting for these elections. Okay? So if you look at, you know, of the town council, you'll see a, a large number of votes when you get down to the, to the, um, Board of Education level, that those votes drop off dramatically, because a lot of people don't know who they're voting for, they just don't know a lot about them, okay? Um, that, that other factor comes into play, too, in, in an argument that said, one of the unfortunate things that has happened in the town, and with all due respect to the press from the Berlin citizens and so forth, over the last few elections, less and less coverage has been being given to these elections. The last one had zero coverage in regards to the town council largely, except for letters to the editor, and ads that were put in the paper. They used to do profiles of all the candidates, they used to do profiles of the Board of Education. They haven't, they didn't do it in the last election.
That's true.
And, and the time before, you know, they did a little better, but, but that dropped off, too. Um, it's in reference that, you know, the, the non-affiliated candidates do, try to do a really good job of getting the word out. Um, they're basically relegated to if they wanna put something in the press, unless they wanna pay for it. Um, by the time election time comes around, they're still limited to a hundred-word letter to the editor, basically, which says nothing about them. Um, as, as far as with regards to, and this is my own personal experience, with all these candidates that are running, that are going door-to-door-to-door, in the last election, there was a lot of candidates running, not a single person ever came to my door, I never got a single purse of li- literature from any one of the candidates. So I, I don't think they're really getting out to vast numbers, probably largely to, you know, not a lot of funds to get, get their word out, so to speak. There's also a, a study that was done.
Your street's too long, that's why. Just kidding, just kidding.
It's too dangerous to walk on the street.
That's the easiest thing you can do.
There's also a study that was done, and this was done in, um, I believe it was done in, I don't know if it's, uh, two thousand and eleven, I believe, and it was done by the University of Pittsburgh. It's a fairly in-depth, you know, go, a lot, most of this just goes through their, their rationale, and how they conducted it, all the sign, statistical analysis they did and whatever. So it's twenty pages of that, but, you know, they, they do have an abstract with their conclusion. And, and basically, the conclusion is, this suggests that in judicial election, voters are able to successfully bring partisan and/or ideology information to bear on their voting decisions, in both partisan and nonpartisan ballot format, rendering nonpartisan elections ineffective at removing the partisan element of elections. And, and a couple of other ones are basically saying, people want to know what your political persuasion is, where you come from, what, you know, what you believe in, what your philosophy is about government, and, I mean, one of the things is, and in this town, is, is the Board of Education budget is, is larger than the town budget, and people wanna know what you believe in, and how you're gonna spend that money.
Okay. Yeah, so let's.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's what I was looking for.
Let, yeah, go ahead.
You know, I, I come from a family of educators, so I have experience of education. You have a Board of Education, I, I went to a party Saturday night, the majority of them were educators, and you know what their main concern is? The nine-zero vote. And this is how their agenda is, nine-zero, had a discussion. And the majority of them are teachers, and they favor a partisan Board of Education, because they feel that the Board of Education is a rubber stamp superintendent. This is how they feel. They're not gonna go public, they're not gonna go public.
The Board of Education members?
Yes, they're a rubber stamp, and they're not gonna go public. These are educators in this town, similar to as the police officers that wrote a letter here that were against the police station. These educators are not gonna go public. They all favor a partisan Board of Ed. There was about twenty of them.
Wait, so you're, are you talking about educators, or the Board of Education members?
No, I'm talking to Board of Education members, they're me.
Okay.
Every vote they take.
Right, no, no, that's not what I'm asking. You said the Board of Education is in favor.
The Board of, no, the teachers.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
The ranking file of this town, the actual teachers, twenty of them that were at this party are in favor of partisan Board of Education.
Well, I've heard from twenty that they're not in favor.
You know what, that's great, but they feel, this is what they feel, they feel that the Board of Education is secretive, they feel that the Board of Education is a rubber stamp of the superintendent. And I've talked to a number of people, this is how they feel. So my philosophy is, hey, listen, I stand with the teachers, I stand with the students, let's just put it out there, vote. I mean, if you're afraid of the vote.
I'm not afraid of the vote at all.
Then let's just put out the vote.
I'm not afraid of the vote.
See, this is the problem, we wanna agree, but if we were on the board, we'd be forced to agree.
That's not true.
Yes, that's true.
I served on the Board of Ed for six years.
No, 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 please, you're wrong.
I'm wrong about what? What I did with six years of my life? You didn't even come to a meeting in those six years. How would you know?
All right, come on. It's enough.
I guess you could say we're conferring, Mr. Mayor. That's what the statute requires, and that's what we're doing.
It's quite the conferring, I never use the gavel so much, okay? So, um, yeah, let, let's just get the facts out here, we'll, we'll have our, each one of us, if we wish to speak, uh, we'll have our time to ask some more questions, and we'll finish our conference. So go ahead, continue down the changes.
Down the change, yep. Um, so, um, regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, we, um, again, the council expressed their concerns about this last, last meeting, perhaps more than any other issue. Um, we voted to leave the Planning and Zoning Commission as one board, as it is now. Uh, it does have seven members with three alternates, five-year terms, that's exactly how it is now. The only change we're proposing is to, um, the previously mentioned, uh, term limits for, uh, membership on Planning and Zoning, Inland Wetlands, and Zoning Board of Appeals, with, uh, also a term limit for the officers, which we discussed previously. So, um, we are no longer proposing separate Planning and Zoning Commissions.
Awesome. So we found one we agree on. Excellent.
Um, okay, there was a lot of talk about percentages versus hard numbers. Uh, one of them was with regard to, uh, the turnout for the first referendum, uh, requiring, for example, ten percent turnout to force a second referendum. Uh, the, the committee did, prior to this meeting, discuss at length, uh, criteria, threshold criteria, such as, such as that. In other words, uh, some towns, I believe Cheshire may have it, where you, if, uh, if, if the budget is defeated, but not enough people vote at all, then it doesn't count, and the budget is passed. We all felt that that was an awful idea, that not, does nothing but disenfranchise those who may vote against the budget, but because not enough of his neighbors voted against the budget, then his vote doesn't count anymore. So, um, with all due respect, we felt that that, that was a bad idea, putting a threshold in for the second referendum. However, on the, on the percentages, and I believe the council discussed a, a whole bunch of percentages, so for the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars requiring a town meeting, uh, to purchasing and contracting, the twenty-five-thousand or two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the five-million-dollar threshold for automatic bonding, um, the one-million dollars required for a statement of need to go to the Public Building Commission, all the things I've listed on the sheet there. Uh, we didn't change the dollar amounts or add percentages, but what we did was, uh, add a provision that says, every five years, the town council may increase or decrease those numbers according to the Consumer Price Index. So, um, this will give the council some discretion. I know there was some concern that there would be years before the next Charter Commission, and that the numbers would become outdated. Um, and, you know, I, I think there are enough Charter Commissions, frankly, even if they're once a decade, to be able to deal with those numbers and increase them or decrease them appropriately, but this allows the Charter to amend those numbers based on the Consumer Price Index. Doesn't require the council to do that, but allows them to do that.
Would that be incorporated by ordinance?
Um, the language we, we have right now does not require an ordinance. Um, we did discuss this, it, in my opinion, it probably should be done by ordinance.
Okay, that's fine.
Because ordinance has a little bit stricter standard, as you know, there has to be a public hearing, and it's a little bit harder to get passed, so I, I would think that we can add that in, that the council could amend by ordinance those amounts.
Great.
If, if that's how you feel, do you feel that, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Especially with documentation and record keeping, I think it would make things easier that way.
Okay, just moving on. There was a comment about the school and town budgets being a separate vote on the ballot. Again, the council felt strongly about this, felt it would increase transparency and give the Board of Finance and the Town Council some feedback as to which budgets needed Lastly, we did discuss the two new ordinances that we had proposed, and there was some concern about those. Each one of those, you have to take separately. The Agricultural Commission was, you know, really a surprise to everybody. That was, several people talked about that at the initial public hearing. And, you know, by statute, the Agricultural Commission cannot be formed by charter, it can only be formed by the town's legislative body, so that would have to be formed by the Town Council by ordinance.
Yeah, that's my real job.
This charter does not form the Agricultural Commission. It just says that the Town Council at some point has to do something about it. Because the statute says you can either form your own Agricultural Council or you can join a regional council. That will be completely up to this council or a future council. There is no timeframe on that. The committee felt that we should keep that in there. The second one was the Golf Course Committee. Again, we had a meeting almost completely dedicated to this, and I can back this up from experience. This Golf Course Commission has been talked about for many, many years. All of us felt it was a good idea to keep Timberland in tip-top shape, to offer a sounding board for complaints coming in from golfers, from patrons of the golf course. And it just doesn't seem that the Park and Rec Commission is getting that done. Now, this is not an indictment on the Park and Rec Commission, but maybe they have too much and they cannot focus on this tremendous asset that the town has and really needs to keep. So, again, we are not forcing the creation of this commission. We are just saying that this council or a future council with no time restraints should form this board, because this will help improve Timberland Golf Course.
Okay, so, and Paul, I'm sorry, I had to step off for a minute. So these two things, I know we had talked about it last time. So you're saying it's just a recommendation to the council to look at these two boards, and there's no timeframe, there's no real direction?
There is no direction other than-
Look at-
Yeah, the language says that it shall be done, but there's no time limit.
Time frame.
Okay? Time frame. There was a question about whether or not the Park and Recreation Commission, I'm sorry, whether the Golf Course Commission could even be formed under the charter, because the section on the Park and Recreation Commission says that it deals with all parks, all public parks, okay? So the question is, if the council, simply by ordinance, created a golf commission, the Park and Rec Commission might come right back at you and say, that ordinance is invalid. And the town attorney could say, well, the Park and Rec Commission is in charge of all parks. So we made it clear that notwithstanding that there's a Park and Recreation Commission that's in charge of parks, the council shall establish by ordinance a separate commission charged with the direction and oversight of Timberland Golf Course. That the commission is independent of the Park and Recreation Commission. The membership terms, scope of duties, and other particulars of said commission shall be set forth in the ordinance. So it's totally up to the Town Council as to how you want to structure this board, whether it just be simply advisory, whether it have authority over the, you know, the direction of the course, how many members, where those members come from, whether or not it reports to the Park and Rec Commission or reports directly to the council or to the manager, et cetera.
All right. Yeah, as long as you leave it to our discretion. I know, I mean, there definitely have been several people, certainly with the golf course, that have approached me about it and were pretty passionate about us putting together some type of commission, so.
Those members, Mr. Mayor, feel that nothing has been done for a long time.
Yeah.
And we felt that we could really kickstart that.
I mean, honestly, I've heard both sides. I don't golf, so I'm a little bit disadvantaged, but I think now that, maybe when the weather cools off a little bit, I'll go take a walk around up there. But I, you know, I've heard both sides. Some people have told me there was a timeframe that the golf course was going down, kind of going down the drain, and now it's sort of back up again, and others feel like it's not. So, you know, I guess somewhere the truth is in the middle somewhere in how we're doing out there. But if this is just a recommendation for us to look at that, I know there are people that feel strongly about it, so.
That's true.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Take a look at that.
All right, so are there questions?
Yes, so let's do this. So, yeah, let's, we'll go down each council member, please, you know, let's, I mean, you can say as much as you want or not, but let's give us all a chance and understand we're just trying to get some background. This is our conference, so we do get some feel for how the commission came to their opinions and, you know, whatever we want to get out of it. But, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Let me preface my remarks by thanking the Charter Revision Commission. I was on three or four, Kate. And I understand-
You are, I'm sure.
Many.
And I under- many. Seventy-six was the last time we tried to do a partisan Board of Ed. And I appreciate your work, and I know it's time-consuming, and thank you for that. I'll leave my comments for next week, but the one question I have is a procedural one, Paul. Do you want to lump this all into one question to facilitate the vote on the ballot?
No, and that's because we feel that these are significant changes to our town governing document, and they should be allowed to have the choice of several different questions.
But wouldn't you agree that the Board of Finance is integral to any changes with the rest of the charter?
Not all the changes, but many of them. For instance, the budget process, adding the second budget referendum, changing the, you know, the questions on the ballot, having the advisory question, yes. The financial aspects of it, the Board of Finance and all the voting on the budget, and even the bonding section, really cannot be separated out. Because there are certain, if this council, if this committee did not approve the Board of Finance, we would have had stricter timeframes on a lot of that stuff. For instance, we may have had more than two budget referenda. We may have had a lower threshold on the bonding, instead of five million, for instance, it would have been every bond automatically. We felt because the Board of Finance is in there, that we could loosen some of those restrictions. So the answer is yes. I think those areas need to be one question. Because if the Board of Finance isn't approved, but the other parts of that are approved, it would be impossible to weed out the language.
So how many questions do you envision?
Well, I don't know exactly, but I think the Board of Education would be a separate question. I think the popularly elected mayor with the council setup would be a separate question. So that would be three, and we can go from there. Our committee, once this part of the process is over, we're going to be working on the questions with, you know, in conjunction with Kate, and we'll make recommendations to the council, and then we'll have another discussion on those questions. I'd say, I'd like to have no more than five, Peter, frankly.
That's a lot of questions, especially for a pretty loaded ballot.
Thank you.
In 2002, just for reference, there were five questions. One was a catch-all, what was it called, technical changes, which was just kind of the rearranging and renumbering of the thing. And we have a lot of that, too. So right now, I can think of then four questions.
If I may, please, I said, before, on Friday, I talked to our Corporation Council, and he kind of laid out as far as what we need to do. Tonight was to confer, and then at the next meeting of the Charter Commission, they'll do their final draft. That will be done on August 1st. So as soon as the draft is available, I will send it out to everybody so that you have it. And then hopefully you'll have your special meeting on August 9th. And at that point, you will do multiple things. You're going to vote on the entire, after receiving the final report, you're going to either approve or reject or act on different provisions within the proposed charter changes. You're going to then send it to, as we all know, to the general election in November. You will vote on that. And you're going to at least start giving me some guidelines as far as the questions on the ballot, okay? So that we're already talking about it a little bit, but at least some guidelines. Chairman Argosy and I will sit down and start doing the questions, and also you have to authorize me to do explanatory texts, okay? And then Charter Revision Commission has another meeting on August 15. They'll kind of help out a little bit, too. And then on September 6, which is your next regular scheduled council meeting, you will approve the questions. All right, do you have?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay.
I think the most important thing to keep in mind is that you can accept, you can reject, or you can separate the provisions as well.
But we can't change.
Okay, so.
Only accept, reject, or separate, but not change.
Not amend.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Okay.
I think there was some question about that, so.
Yeah, if you want to amend something, you're going to amend it tonight.
Okay.
All right, this is part of your conference to amend. I think it's in the summary that you can add something, you know, hopefully not major, but.
Was there a question that, I talked to Jeff, there was something, he said we had to just change, it was like a word. What, what was it?
Maybe, was it the Code of Ethics, was it the Code of Ethics provision? That is in the list.
Yeah, is that what it was? I asked that he remind you to tell us, right?
Because the probable, the probable cause here at that stage, the way that it was amended, the way the charter amendment reads, is that it makes that stage a public meeting, and that cannot be pursued.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was something.
Okay.
And that was done by Charter Revision at their last council meeting, I mean, last commission meeting.
So, yeah, they fixed that. So you fixed that already? You fixed that already?
We did, I didn't mention that, but it's the last one on the list.
Yeah, I see that there now, yeah, I see that, yeah, okay, that's what I think we were talking about.
Awesome.
There was something else you I think you wanted to amend, though.
Yeah, there was, what was it?
I don't remember.
I can't remember.
I believe it was, if I may, the mayor, oh, it was suggested that the council present the budget at the budget hearing.
Oh, yes.
But the problem with that is that the council doesn't even have the budget yet. It's still the Board of Finance's budget.
Before it comes to.
So typically, the Board of Finance was the one that presented the budget. Now that we have a town manager, there's no reason why the town manager can't present the budget. In fact, the charter says that the town manager shall present, or his or her designate shall present the town side of the budget. So I'm sure that can be worked out, depending on the council.
We already do anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, right, we sort of do it that way anyway, so, all right, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, oh, you know, there was a question on that date of August 9th. I don't know if we'd be able to move that to the 11th. Would that create heartache for people?
That's a Thursday?
I can't be here, that doesn't-
Okay, well, so, that's, you know, I mean, you know, we had some discussion on it, so I mean-
Yeah, there's a primary that day, so it-
Oh, that's right.
I want to make sure that if people want to come and have their voices heard, that they have the opportunity to do that, and with the election going on, it may be difficult.
Well, she'll be busy, right, Kate?
Oh, that's right. You had a problem on the 9th anyway, right?
Oh.
That was the reason, though, right?
No, the 9th is fine, we'll do whatever.
The 9th is fine?
We're working it all out.
Just have a question on that.
Yeah, what do you think?
Is that meeting on the 9th one in which there would be an audience of citizens?
We can. You've had audiences as special meetings before, I mean, we can do that.
You can always have public comment. That's your choice.
Because I think that, Ms. Caponella-
That's the question.
Yeah.
We can do that, that's easy. We have done that in the past.
Question or concern.
Yeah.
Sounds like both.
I'd like to have input from, you know, the voters. If we're going to be talking about this again, I think that's an important thing. We should hear their voices again.
I would suggest that it only be this topic, so.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I think we already kind of decided that, it would just be this.
You just took over my meeting.
Yeah, right, we took this over, yeah, that was your meeting, Dave, that's right, we definitely-
You need another meeting.
Totally took that over, yeah, that's, that's a long gone. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, whatever we all think, I guess, we can see what you want to do.
You can amend the motion.
I don't know, I mean, we've had a lot of public comment already. I mean, I'm always open for more, but, you know, there's a point that we probably just have to, again, make a decision and move forward. But if we think people want to come on that day and they can't make it, you know, I don't think from the 9th to 11th is that big a deal for anybody, right? I don't know, what do you guys think? What does everybody think? Is that a big deal? But now you can't make it?
On the 11th. I won't be here.
There's always going to be today, we can't all make it, we get it, but-
I won't be here that week, so.
Yeah, I mean, if that's a night for people in town or busy with something else?
But Marsha might be or someone else.
Yes, Marsha will be.
Marsha or someone else.
Yeah, no, that's right, I think you already mentioned that, right?
Yep.
For the night. So does it matter with the 11th? Does that mess up any schedule with anything you guys are doing, or when you're having your next Charter Re-
The next meeting will be on August 1st.
Theirs is the 1st, and then they don't have anything till after we meet, right?
They have one scheduled for the 8th, it will probably be canceled, and then they'll have a meeting on the 15th.
Okay, so after we're done, no matter what, no matter what we do, after we're done. Yeah, I mean, what do you think, 11th, does that manage with Thursday?
As long as I'm alive, I'm available on that Thursday. It's okay with me.
Okay, all right, all right. So let's, we'll just move that to the 11th, and that's fine, two days is not going to-
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Matter, all right, and it might be nice to have a meeting on a Thursday night, too, for a change, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, where are we at? I'm sorry, I just had a call from work, I apologize for being a little distracted. The building might be burning down, I don't know, you know, so whatever, if it burns down, who knows? Thank God it's not the building that has product in it, no, it's another building, yeah. It's an empty building, but if it burns down, it's not a good thing. We're supposed to move into it, so. So, all right, so where are we at? So we kind of went through the changes. What else, anything else that we want to hear from the Charter Revision Commission before we maybe have some questions that we might want to clear up? Yes, yeah.
I didn't know where you were, I was-
Well, just to make sure if there's any other, kind of done with our presentation, so maybe now we'll just kind of go through the council for questions while everyone's here, what they can ask, you know, answer, what we want to know.
You know, I just want to say I appreciate addressing my concern or question about what happens if you don't come to an agreement for that. And my concern was that there's always that first time that it might happen. It will be the first time out of the gate, too, that that might happen. But my question for the commission is, was there any other solution to that discussed? There may not have been, but was there any other solution to that other than passing the previous budget?
The current budget. If anybody wants to jump in, yeah, we did discuss, one other option was to have the town manager's recommended budget be automatically passed on to the council. I believe the feeling on that was that, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would allow the, it would put a pressure on the minority party on the, well, the party on the Board of Finance, whose, the members whose party was in the minority on the council, to just pass the buck on to the council and just have all three of them vote no. Again, Dave, this has never happened, so it's kind of hard to imagine this, but we didn't feel that that was the job of the Board of Finance. If the Board of Finance really is absolutely refusing to do their work, then take last year's budget, let the council and the, you know, the council can't raise it, okay, but the joint board can raise it. So if the joint board cannot reach an agreement on raising it, let it go to a referendum. Let it get defeated, it comes back to the Board of Finance, and people are going to be pretty angry at the Board of Finance at that point for not doing their job. And I doubt it would happen a second time.
No, that was an important point, that it does, you know, if it does need to go up, then the joint board could address that, so.
Yes.
I appreciate that insight into that discussion. Thank you.
Sure.
I do just want to say that I appreciate your listening on some of the other items. I realize you didn't on the Board of Ed, but I appreciate the other stuff, so.
Okay.
Listen, I got nothing but love for you guys, but got to dig in where it's important to dig in, and I know you appreciate that.
I understand. I've dug in many times myself.
[laughing]
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Charlie.
Could you just help me understand, under the dollar limits, number one and number five, what the numbers represent?
Yeah, Charlie, the purchasing and contracting, currently, the dollar amount is $10,000 that the manager can approve contracts for, without the approval of the Town Council. And the recommendation is to increase that to $25,000. So that would be one of the areas that the cost of living adjustment could be changed by the Town Council.
I understand that, but what's the $250,000?
Okay. Just look that up, that's, what's that?
Isn't that the cumulative?
That's the cumulative, yeah.
Fiscal year?
Fiscal year, yeah, fiscal year, so.
You get $10,000, $25,000.
So if you had like eleven of them, the 11th one would have to come to you guys.
Got it.
I was just trying to figure out where that quarter million came from.
Yeah.
And that'd be the same thing on number five, then?
Yeah, as far as what has to go to town meeting, that's what that is. Number five is $25,000 for expenditure appropriations, $50,000 for revenue appropriations, that's a new provision suggested by Jim Ren, and $250,000 for cumulative appropriations of either of the first two.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The purchasing and contracting, I just, when you said that, it just triggered this question. If, so if somebody has something that's more than $25,000, that would come to the council?
Yes.
Would that be still included in the $250,000, or is that outside of that?
I believe that's included, right? It's cumulative.
So you could have really one huge ticket item, and then that would be, you know, you'd be allotted for the rest of the year, basically, and you'd be going to the council on everything?
That's right, and right now, it's 10.
Okay.
So that was one of the things that the manager and staff, almost universally suggested increasing, because that had not increased in many, many years. And it was hindering projects and awarding of bids, et cetera.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, just a question on the Consumer Price Index, whether that will be stated in the, you know, as such and such a date, is there a year figure, is it a monthly figure?
It's very specific, Dave, it has the basis in there.
Okay, good.
It has the index that it is. We actually took this out at Cheshire's Town Charter, it's one of the things they had. The idea was if we just put a percentage in there, so one year this $25,000 figure is $25,000, then it goes to $25,038, or next year it goes to $24,800. And because we're looking at all these cumulative totals, these guys got to track all this thing. So having this change every single year in all these categories was, especially if they're using spreadsheets to track, it was going to cause a lot of work for these guys.
Yeah, I appreciate the solution.
A lot more reasonable to say 25, 30 at your discretion, 35 at your discretion, sorry.
I have a question, also, along that same line, does any other town do it? So I know you mentioned Cheshire did it this way, but did any other town do it the way that we had talked about with like a percentage of the budget? Or did you guys find that that didn't happen really?
There are a lot of towns that do it just by a fixed amount, which we did. There are a lot of towns that do it by a percent. But when we thought, when we came across the Cheshire one, I thought that was pretty innovative. And they actually do it, they shall, you know, so it forces you to do it. But this way, this gives more control to the town council. You can make the decision when the threshold goes over in five years to $30,000, do you want to do that or not? You know, so it gives you a lot more control over it.
Excellent.
There are variations that towns do. We found three, Shelton, Talon, and Avon, that don't specifically, for everything, do percentages, but they have percentages in some things, such as, in Shelton, any appropriation for bonding that exceeds 2% of the operating budget goes through a referendum. However, that can be avoided if the Board of Alderman passes an appropriation by a three-quarters vote. There's so many different variations of it, you go crazy trying to really, you know, put your hand on and incorporate this into our charter. So we felt this was a safeguard by future councils. If years go by and there's no charter revision, and these numbers become so outdated that there has to be some relief, the council can take it upon itself, pass an ordinance, and amend it. It's not meant to be done every year, obviously.
Yeah.
All right, okay, good, what, other questions?
Just want to echo some of the comments up here, that, you know, appreciate all the hard work from the commission. Thanks for accepting our nomination and not doing it. You guys did an awful lot of work, and I don't know if a lot of people out there appreciate it, or even know how many meetings you guys had and what you guys looked at. And just to make sure that, you know, none of us up here gave you guys any direction or charge to look at. So, you know, the things you looked at and the time you spent was amazing.
I'm not sure we thought you'd look at the whole charter, but whatever, you did. And that's okay, but it was a big undertaking, and, you know, again, some great changes. I mean, there's some philosophical changes, and, you know, I think that's great, because let people, you know, as we send it forward, whatever we send forward, obviously, right, that people will decide what they want and they don't like. But it's, you know, it's good, it's good discussion, very lively discussion, I'm sure it will continue. But yeah, a lot of hard work, appreciate it, and it was a lot of work, I mean, really, to look through that whole charter, yeah. Thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
What else, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Just another question. I think it was on the partisan Board of Ed discussion, there was a six to one vote, is that what I understood on that? And is there anyone that was the one no here that can express to me their concern?
It was commission member Morelli voted against that, she's not here.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, I mean, we kind of went with, you know, it's like, okay, I understand your arguments, but in good conscience, I'm going to vote this way. I mean, if there was a real hard stop, I mean, we talked it out thoroughly, you know, it's like, so, you know, somebody had a lot of object about any one issue, we made sure, while we didn't necessarily get consensus on a vote, we made sure everybody understood the logic and why we were thinking a certain way and so forth.
I mean, I think it's great, you went, and I know you started there, we went full circle, back to the two-year term with the school board, and I didn't really know which way I thought, but the more I thought about it, I think that, hey, it's fair for the council, I guess it's fair for the school board, you know? If you want to make a change, you make a change, if you don't, you don't, so. Two years seems to be pretty fair, I think, for everyone. Good, Dave?
Yeah, I'm just going to add, too, and that was kind of what I expressed last time, is feeling that they didn't feel that it took any time to get up to speed to be on council, as it may be on the Board of Ed. But what I took away from that, you know, the two-year thing, is that even if you look at the history of the town council, if there's concern of just so much turnover, there has been consistency. If we look at many council members that have served for, you know, over multiple years, over spanning multiple terms, that I've, at least I've witnessed some continuity there over the years. And I feel that that can be maintained, partisan or nonpartisan, at least if you go the two years, I don't think we lose anything going from the four to two. I could see why the sway was going there, but I feel that we're maybe a little back on par with saying that there is some strength and importance in understanding that the turnover isn't as dramatic as some people may have had some concern. And that parts my opinion on the level of concern, so.
Okay, what else? Anybody else, questions, concerns, while we have our esteemed commission members here that we can ask them and beat them up some more, whatever? No, I'm just asking some more questions. No, we're good?
Good.
Okay, so this would end our, this is our.
Conference.
Our conference, so our conference has been conducted now, right?
Awesome.
Okay, so where does that leave us now, Kate? So our conference is conducted.
Yep, so now what will happen is that the Charter Revision Commission will meet on August 1st. They'll finalize their draft, they'll present it to me, and then I will turn it over to you. At your August 11th meeting, you will decide to either reject, accept, or whatever, portions of it or the entire thing. At that meeting, you will also have to at least try to give me direction as far as questions that you want on the ballot. You don't, you're not going to formulate them, just tell me you want a question. Chairman Argosy and I will do more of that with the commission. And then they also to authorize me to do an explanatory text. The explanatory text will be, of course, available to anyone who wants it, and it will kind of hopefully successfully delete the, everything that is being changed, okay?
Okay, good, all right, so.
Mayor, I have a question for Madam Clerk.
Yes.
When is that draft going to be provided to the council, and in what form?
I hope to have, you're going to adopt the questions on September 6th. So depending upon, to be honest, how quickly we can get all that, is when you're going to have it.
Okay, I guess my question, let me rephrase that, is related to the drafting of the actual charter revision itself for our meeting on the 11th.
On the meeting of August 11th, you will adopt the charter amendments, reject the charter amendments?
When do we get those amendments, is?
Dave?
Oh, for the draft.
As soon as I can get them out.
I'm not putting pressure on you, I'm just trying to see what her expectation was, and.
Well, as soon as, after they meet on the 1st, as soon as they finalize that draft, which really, there's not many changes, I think the only change from tonight is to include the word ordinance for the, for the increases with the amounts. So I would think that we would have that by August 2nd or 3rd, and at that point, it will be sent out to you right away.
So I kind of like Pavlov's dog, you know, I know every Friday I got to look for something from you, so that's why I was trying to get a timeframe, especially in August, when to look for an email or something.
Would it help, would it help if I even just leave a message for you guys on your phones? I mean, I can do that, I'm happy to, I can at least then give you the heads up. I'll call you each on your phones and just say, look for this. Is that good?
Yeah, that works.
Sure.
It's above and beyond, I appreciate it.
That's okay.
And we will note the changes from the draft that you have from your last meeting to the changes discussed tonight incorporated. They will all be incorporated in a color format, so you'll see the changes. You'll be very easily able to follow along.
So red and blue lines?
Yeah, it'll be, maybe not lines, but it'll be red or blue or.
Yes, underline.
Underline.
George has the case right there.
George is an expert on this, so.
You'll receive two documents, so the one document is sort of like the official final draft that we sign off on. And that's basically, if you took today's charter and what the proposed charter is, it's every change from there to there, okay? That has to be shown that way, strikeouts, add-ins, and things like that, just the way that you got the last one. In addition to that, if you want it, we made a lot of changes that Paul talked about today from the last one. We can do a comparison document from that final, final draft to the previous final draft, and that would highlight all the changes that were made from that one since then. But you do have to get this one, that's a little tough to get through, because that is that comparison to the existing town charter. And that's the official thing that really gets voted on.
And that's why I didn't want to, we didn't want to give you another draft tonight, because if there were changes after tonight, then you'd be looking at yet another draft that you would be confused beyond belief.
Yes.
So we summarize the changes, but you'll get the final one next Tuesday or Wednesday.
And the final one is what will be available on the website and that whole bit, so we will update that.
Great, awesome.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, members of the commission, appreciate you guys coming out for a meeting we didn't know we had to have, but it's great, we have. So it's good. Okay, so where are we at? We are at topic number nine, our continued discussion.
Kate can ask a question before?
Yep.
Do I have to make a motion to set the meeting?
Yes, you do.
All right, so let's do that, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to have a special meeting on August 11th at 7 o'clock to receive the final draft from the Charter Revision Commission.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, our continued discussion on town priorities, debt structure projections, do we have any?
May I make a suggestion, Mayor?
You sure, ma'am?
What I would, and David and I haven't really talked, but with Jim's departure, with also the lateness of the hour and everything that else you discussed, I do think that you will need at least one more priority setting session, perhaps in early September. And, you know, David's graphs were very helpful. I think that, you know, his groupings were helpful in that they, as we discussed, or you discussed the last time, it put things kind of together as a group, as far as, but, you know, you just have to remember you have infrastructure, and then you've got all the rest, kind of. So those are the two big priorities, but I think that David and I can work together in the absence of a finance director, or even with the new interim finance director, to put together another more specific priority session, if that's all right.
And give us time to look at, you know.
Yeah. What you've got tonight, because I think that that was.
And that's why I wanted to make sure you had something this evening, to knowing that it would have to be discussed later, and you can, you know, maybe high, medium, and low in priority, I don't know, if you start adding more layers than that, you start running into challenges. But we could set up a meeting, and the basis of it certainly would be these, but I don't want to limit you either, you know, if either, if anyone has something that says, hey, it's not on here, and we need to consider it, please, let's include that. And the goal here is certainly to help the town manager and the new finance director set some priorities as they move forward on the upcoming budget session, because it's really key to have that input from us.
Yeah, okay, no, we certainly went through, it was supposed to be a relatively easy meeting, which is a difficult meeting tonight for a lot of ways. Just a lot of things on the agenda, which I don't think we all planned on, but that's all right, we got through it, so. Okay, great, so the last thing would be the acceptance of our July 12th minutes, so we can just finish this out here, we have a motion on that.
Okay, a motion to accept the special town council meeting from July 12th, 2016.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? An abstention, thank you, Kristen. Okay, great, so that passes, and motion for adjournment?
To adjourn?
Second, second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And so adjourned at 9:25.